Did the one for our technology committee. I'm an administrator.
If I just heard you correctly and I understand it, then if for example if we put something on the webpage itself, the main webpage, it's gonna be linked right to the Facebook page and then it's gonna get broadcasted
A plastic globe.
To all the other Facebook pages that are linked to it.
Well, anybody that that has liked the site or
Well, I mean like the police department, library, you know, you know, those people, because if you all have individual groups that are following those particular Facebook pages, there's something you did something on the website, this this one, it's gonna get broadcast up to those who reach more people.
Yeah, if people like it, oh yeah, the broadcast will be broad. So, you know, things like when the pond, the dam broke, you know, it went up on our website, the police put it up on theirs, but it took everybody going in and doing something. This would be more automatic if somebody's gone in and they've liked the Dunbar and Town webpage, then they would start, we see if they wanna follow it, they would start getting anything that goes on on the webpage.
Yeah, I guess it's worth a try.
And if we don't like it, it's easy enough to shut it down.
Worth a try, I guess, I don't know, what do you think that's like?
Oh, I guess. The question I would have is, it's a town Facebook, right?
Yep.
So, if somebody makes an inappropriate insensitive comment that offends people, who's responsible? Is it the town responsible?
Oh, I believe it would be the individual that made the posting.
Yeah, but we're allowing them to post it on our account, our Facebook account.
Well, until you block them, you don't have a choice.
I mean, it's like anything else, when it's a stop, somebody can do something on the police department's webpage, or the fire department, or the library, or the transition committee, or whoever, I mean, it can happen. No, I mean, and I'm sure it does happen, but, you know, I can tell you right now, if you go onto Facebook, you look up Dunbar, you'll find that most of the committees here in town now have a Facebook page.
Do you have one, John?
Absolutely not.
No, the fire department doesn't have any, I think he's, I think he's an exception.
Which shouldn't we at least ask a lawyer?
I went to a seminar.
If somebody puts in an inappropriate racist comment for dinner, and somebody takes offense and sues the town, are we liable or aren't we?
I mean, how can you be liable for someone else's actions just because you have a
Because they're using your platform.
Yeah. As long as we have, you want a policy in place or police rules, like maybe it goes that way.
I would like to at least get a legal thing.
Yeah, well, your fire, your police department already has one.
What?
Your police department has one.
We didn't say no to that.
Yeah. And they, they asked you.
I don't think the police, the police department never came and asked us to open up a Facebook.
Maybe not. So, so Chief had some comment, I'll look at here.
I attended a class, but
Yeah, what?
I attended a class a few years ago, and there was two lawyers there from our insurance company, from you know, government center, highly recommended department not to use Facebook for legal reasons. He said, now, this is one lawyer's opinion, if you're gonna use any kind of social event, of social media, use Twitter.
Really?
Yep, that's what they recommended, because
I don't know if we're about Twitter, so I can't, I don't, I don't.
I don't either, that's what he, he told us, and one reason is, basically, it's a one-way conversation, you're putting out information that, you know, town, the fire department needs to put out. Trouble with Facebook is, you know, one person really should have control of what goes on that and goes off it, and you know, obviously, I don't have time to do Facebook, I don't intentionally ever do Facebook, but, uh, but that was his opinion, that if you got, if the town department's gonna have social media, it should use it, but not Facebook.
Well, we have town department using it now, a couple of them actually.
Yeah, I know you do, but
Yeah.
The fire department won't be as long as I'm in charge.
I can take and ask that question tomorrow to you somewhere.
We gotta say, we gotta say the N H M A, we gotta be there, yeah.
Yeah, why don't you ask them, you know, comment a little on that.
Yeah.
Right?
I have a little comment to add to that, the, we'll just say the New Hampshire Municipal Association, they always send that letter around.
Yeah.
There's all kinds of information in there. One time they focused on emails, and this, I know isn't the same thing, but it kinda sounds the same way to me. Said, if you don't want it to end up in the newspaper, don't put it in an email.
Right.
This sounds the same to me, only this is more out of control.
I don't know, the, oh, it's out of control.
That's why I asked my first question, who's gonna manage this thing?
Yeah.
You, she posted, you like it, some guy, Colebrook likes it.
Yeah.
It's out of control.
They could, they could see.
No, and I mean, it's, it's just, it gets out of control.
Just, just to touch on his comment just a little bit, I am on Facebook to keep in touch with my kids. But what I noticed is the people that I've gotten involved with that I've friended, a lot of them, it just ends up being a junk place, it's advertisement, it's a game thing, they, you finish a game and it says, do you wanna face? So eventually, it's not even this discussion or intelligent discussion with, you know, town business, it's going into the personal things, what you're doing and what you're thinking and
Yeah, well, that's what Facebook is, but that town webpage should not be that.
No.
I mean, just like the police department's webpage isn't that.
Well, they have different filters and stuff on it.
Right, they have filters, and we would set it up appropriately for the town.
I mean, because later
It's not gonna, because I, that was my concern too, I mean, was that it would turn into a free-for-all, people fighting. Shouldn't be that. And I guess there are things you can do and set up, I mean, I'm not as savvy as some, you know, like Jason and Scott are very savvy with that stuff, and
Want to take a look at your Facebook?
Mine's easy.
You're talking about the technology?
Oh, that one, yeah, yeah, you can do that.
Okay, so I have no problem as long as the town would not be, have any liability for any contact.
Yeah, I'm with Ted O'Donnell. But if, but if we find out the town does have some issues here, then there's a whole lot of us that need to
Yes, we'll have to run that.
To go, yeah, to go back in and kill those accounts.
Yeah, that's a question, how come the police department then gets the okay from the town to open up a Facebook account?
You're asking me?
Yeah, well, I'm asking them.
I don't know.
And they don't know.
I know, I'm just kidding. Yeah, you're asking the wrong person, cool, let's go back and hit straight to the, probably bored on that one.
People table that to next time.
I have some different questions for tomorrow.
No, that's good, I'm glad that came up.
Well, I know like for my motorcycle club, they have a Facebook page, and it's none of that stuff on it, it's very, it's regulated, it's managed, they got one guy that manages it, and nothing like that comes on.
So, who's gonna manage it?
Well, that's, well, well, I know that on the technology committee, I'm gonna be managing this one, and administrator.
We can let you do that, Alice.
Huh?
We can let you do that.
Get my own Facebook account. So, you've interrupted by kids.
You're a natural weather.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that was it.
All right. You have anything else for the board? All right, no, it's getting late. Let's go around the table here, house, department, Jeff, anything else?
No, I just got a personal question.
Okay.
Do you want me to wait till the end or just eject right now?
Uh, if you wanna wait, that's fine.
Okay.
John? Just a heads up that nine-one-one mapping is completed there, mapping of the town, and has presented us with some maps and about a ten-page document that suggestions of changes that we could make, probably not gonna make one, but there are some addresses and some road issues. Need to deal with, but we reviewed the maps, Steve and I did.
Yeah.
Go back to nine-one-one, they're gonna correct the changes that we found, I'll bring that to you very shortly.
Okay.
And we'll dock the maps, so the maps can be put into the nine-one-one system right off the bat. Then, I'll come back, and we can go through the changes that they recommend.
Sure.
And go through those, and then, you know, we might have to have a public hearing to put some of those in place.
Yeah.
You know, there's not a lot, but you'll see when, you see a document, but there is some issues that should be addressed. They'll be coming, hopefully soon.
We're gonna win for our agenda, so we don't forget it. Thank you.
Ready? Couple things, the July fourth, I know it's a little ways out, but need to think about it, it's a Saturday. What, your wishes are gonna be, I'm not gonna be around, so
It's a holiday.
Close transfer station. Yeah, just give them enough notice.
Yeah, I know, we'll get it out now, that's kinda why I'm asking now.
Put it on your Facebook page, and I can get pity guys
I'll have to draw a face off of you.
For the whole time for a holiday.
Uh, the other thing is the, we're getting low on dump stickers, like we're down to probably, we've leaned, actually found some more, or Linda, somebody found some more, we thought we were all out. Um, I've been researching a little bit, and I think what's gonna happen, we'll end up changing colors this time around. Um, you should do that, it's been quite a while that these ones, you know, I've been here fourteen years, going fifteen, and we've had the same ones, so we should do a color swap, that's one thing.
Where you should get them, right?
I'm gonna shop around a little bit, I went to one place on, and spoke to them, and it was, a five thousand stick is, that was like their minimum, was nine hundred dollars.
Wow.
So, I'm gonna talk to up the president, see what's
Yeah, we're gonna say
Yeah, see what they can do, if it's something they can even do.
A crown trophy, and hopefully they might make them.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, still, we got a little bit of time on it, so, we'll get the stick up, I'll take care of it. Sure there was something else, I probably forgot it, so, a good enough.
All right, done here, a circle works also. Judy, I see you came in.
Um, yes, I just wanted to alert the board that you will, in relation to what we were talking about last week, you will, I spoke to the taxpayer today, and he's written a letter, and you, it's in the mail, so we're getting that shortly.
We'll address it when we get to that.
Correct.
Judy, um, you were there at the meeting, then, like, technology meeting, what was your overall take, good, bad, favorable, not?
Um, no, I thought it was favorable, I thought it was favorable, I, I don't know how, obviously, I don't know how it impacts the treasurer, so I don't know.
Yeah, because that was my impression, that that seemed to be the biggest
Yeah, I think is the biggest impact.
Impact at the moment, yeah.
Um, I don't know that it's worth it, I, I still wanna look at, talk, have conversations with some of the tax collectors that I know, because some that, you know, I've gotten some feedback, as I told you.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, some that use it and think that it's great, um, but like they say, well, jeez, you know, it's almost three percent that gets charged back, so there aren't, it's not a heavy usage for
Right, because they're spending big money.
Correct.
Yeah, but for smaller transaction.
Right, oh, absolutely, absolutely.
How the banks pay that way.
Yeah.
So they don't send you big checks.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Maybe you just go direct deposit right to it, potentially, yeah.
Cool.
Well, you know, we have, I get, I get these checks from escrow companies, and I mean, I'll get one check, and it will cover like this many, and some of them have the ability, like, I'll export my list to them
Yeah.
so that they know what they have to, because I don't know each person's bank, and who escrows and who doesn't, but I'll, there's one particular company where I'll send out my, I'll export the list to them. Most of the, most of the companies, because there are quite a few, I hand, I'll get the list, and I've already gotten a couple, when they, I sit there and I handwrite, I check up, as soon as we're gonna be doing the warranting, and I get them loaded in, I write in and handwrite everybody what they owe, and then I mail that, send that back to them, fax it, email it, or whatever, or mail it, and so that they know what to pay for the escrows, but when checks start coming in, I'll get one check that covers like, and this particular company, they could, they could like connect to our system, and like import it in, and then I would have to accept it, but I don't do it that way, I wanna get the physical checks and do the physical matching myself, and that way, because I have had errors before, you know, one time, it was like
Twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, it was like supposed to be two thousand, they sent me twenty thousand, which
That's not bad.
No, it's not bad, but I don't think the town wants to refund eighteen thousand dollars, we'd rather
Right, yeah.
Have it corrected.
Yeah.
So, you know, those, those kind of things, so
Well, you're gonna get those no matter what.
Um, I'm very interested in the, being able to take the checks, you know, people paying online.
Yeah.
I think that, you know, is, if I understand it correctly
The A H C?
The, yeah.
Yeah, because that sounded like it was almost like a direct deposit out of your account.
No, it's not though.
No?
No, we print the, I thought that too, but I think we print the checks, and then I still bring the check to the bank, but it gives people the ability to make the payment from home, and just, of course, you know
But they avoid the fee that way too, the two point nine percent
They pay dollar fifty, or something like that.
Dollar fifty, right, yeah. So that's a pretty good deal.
One fifty, please, taxes to cut me off.
Yeah, versus driving the whole way down here to sit with you, come on.
Wait in line on the last day, when everybody wants to pay.
No way, I couldn't sit with you for free, June.
Um, the question is, if we have the ability to do it directly with our program, our software company,
Yeah, B M S I, yeah.
why would we go through this other company?
Because their, uh, B M S I is a reseller for interwear, B M S I doesn't have a product, so they were a reseller for interwear, same product.
They attach it to hip, you know, they're
Yeah, that's
Who's ever going?
Yeah.
One person designed it, the other ones, you know.
Sell it.
B M S I piggybacks on top of the interwear.
Okay.
Like, Workworks is an interwear product, for example. So, we're probably gonna, we're not gonna change from B M S I, we'll, we'll still deal B M S I, but you'll be using more of interwear's products through B M S I, possibly.
Okay, well, if we go that route, because I know Pam is looking into some other options, right?
Yeah, she gave me that information, I did go online.
And I don't know any, I don't know anything about it.
Yeah, I looked at Worldpay, and they look like a similar kind of company as Globalpay, um, but, um, the person at the bank is on vacation, so I have to wait for that person to come back. Yeah, we're gonna check it out, we'll kick some tires on that.
Oh, so Lindy's stuff again.
Yeah.
Um, Lean, I don't wanna be hugging this woman, but just, did you happen to sign up for that webinar? I, I signed up for a webinar for the new software, because our tax software is coming out with a new update, and I think it's a whole new revamp.
What, what date?
Um, I signed up for, there's May twentieth, and there's June fourth, and I think it's a couple of hours.
I didn't, not yet.
Okay, I don't know if you have to or want to, but I think I sent you the link.
Okay, good, because I don't remember seeing it, okay.
Anything else?
That's all, so, thank you.
I know you just popped in at the last minute, but we're going around the table.
Yeah, I'm set, thank you.
Oh, you're in somebody?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things, one, we all set for, I go ahead, put money away, or the town side for building maintenance, I'm all set to go forward that, because last I knew that there was some issue where that you guys might possibly need some of that money for the roof, and I was supposed to hold off on that, so, am I, or am I good to get my stuff done?
I haven't touched base with you, or is it?
Yeah, we'll look at the budget, I think you've got some money in there that we
Well, I know when they, there was an issue with my alarm, you'd sit to hold off, and, because you didn't know what they were, if they were gonna need extra money for their roof, or what the deal was with that, so I was just asking. And just the other thing, Lean knows about it, but I'm gonna let you guys know as well, um, you're gonna receive a credit card bill from me, um, because our town credit card was declined.
Yeah, we heard.
Okay, I didn't know if you know, I'm just, so, there's not a big issue with you having to pay me, it was, it was right there.
Yeah, we need to bump that limit up.
So
It was
Or I've heard anyway.
There's a, a limit, and we ordered our server, and we had small substantial part purchases, and we're all tied in together, the department, y'all in the same total balance.
I tried to get her to take it, I said, don't you understand this is a town credit card? She said, it don't matter, it's still declined.
Yeah.
Look at it.
I'm working it, I tried last week, she was out of town, and she said, well, just let it go, and things are still happening, I'll never work it.
And I bought somewhere that I read, where you can take a cash advance off that credit card?
Would you?
That should be taken off.
I don't think, I don't think
Well, now that you told me.
I'll check with you.
She's the only one that's authorized to do anything with that.
That's a toll maker, Clark.
I had contacted him last Friday to find out why it was declined, and then I realized it was a five thousand dollar limit. We were paying, and the check was going out of the mail for twenty-six hundred dollars between all three departments, or four departments that use the card, and then the, the, Jim was trying to buy the, um, the server, because it just come in, they don't charge until they put it together, and
What's the maximum?
Can, it's five thousand, that's it.
She's maxed, because I went to use it yesterday, and she's maxed.
Um, so you seem to think there's a cash advance option on that credit card, I own, I mean, that company would not allow me to do anything as far as, because I'm an authorized user, and I have my name on a credit card, it didn't matter, I was not an authorized person to increase the balance, it had to go to the trigger. So, I'll ask her.
Yeah, that's a question anyway.
I don't think that's possible.
Excuse me, Lean, as far as, um, Jim and the servers, do I need to shut down tonight completely, or I just logged off?
Log, log off, it's fine, because he wants to get in there.
Yeah, no, I knew, okay, okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, this is where I read this on this report we'll be discussing tonight.
Yeah.
From the municipal resources, it says on credit cards, the use access control reporting of charges and deactivation of cash advanced features on the card should be addressed. It said, during your interviews, both the fire and police chiefs indicated that they thought that they could access cash via their existing town issued credit card.
Okay, well, I'm just
I, I think, I, I think if I remember right, in the case of emergency, you could use the card to go buy food or supplies for emergency case, maybe they interpreted that?
Maybe, I, I never discussed cash on a credit card, although
I'm sure that
Yeah, why don't we ask you the question anyway?
I'll ask her tomorrow.
But it says if, if they can, that that's something we should deactivate, you know, one should
Oh, I'm sure that can, I'll ask her, she'll say, no.
Yeah, we'll ask her next week, we'll send them.
Wait after she gets over her call, or if you have a question, we'll get to answer it. Hey, be ready for a call, when she lets it know. Yeah. Chill in the corner, right?
I mean, everybody takes credit card today, so, I mean, we do buy, we gotta buy food in the past emergencies, and water, and stuff like that, and we use a credit card.
But that's not cash advance.
We take a cash, we just do it, I mean
Well, you put, if you're like at a store, like Hannover or Market Basket, you can do a cash advance on it, so, that's what they're thinking about, I don't know.
Yeah, who should ask?
I wonder why these guys got these ideas?
I have a pen.
They've obviously done it.
Do you have a pen?
She wants to.
Yeah, yeah, I would think so.
I'll try.
Anybody else?
Don't try right now, because it's
Don't do it tomorrow, man.
Yeah, it's still right now.
It's getting to line tomorrow.
Yeah.
Anybody else on the department heads and committees? All right, you waited patiently, bawling and weeping, you wanna do your time?
I have nothing pertaining to the town, other than the park's gonna open this weekend, again this year, finally, so
We'll get some traffic in town anyways.
Safety park.
Oh, safety park, yes, I saw that.
Well, that's good to know.
Kind of snakes out.
Yeah, so, yeah.
I go down there, I wonder, where you're at your meetings tomorrow.
Yeah.
I wonder if I had the right zone, that's the
I am the same way.
There's another thing, mention to them, we're thinking of doing about a security deposit box, I know there's an R S A that deals with that, so will we be in line with the R S A by having a room secure or safety deposit box? Good?
Yeah, yeah. All right, I think Jeff, you had a
I, I just, it's kind of an observation, a comment to me, in regards to technology committee and all this stuff, we brushed on a thing about how, and use this for example, I mean, use this, I'm pretty naive, but as society and the people around, definitely where they need an email to remind them, it's time to register their car.
They, they, they were all excited about it the other night, but this has to feature the, the tour office.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm using that, because that's the example of you, I don't care if it, I don't care if it's to register your car, or
They want communication.
I, I'm just, I'm amazed.
Jeff, they want communication.
You put, you don't you think at some point, people gotta accept some of their own requirements? Why should the town be obligated to supply malls?
Well, the town
I don't know, but I mean, you're setting a, a thing up to email them automatically to bring, it's time to register.
A reminder.
I mean, come on.
I get them all the time now, I hate them, I'm not a big email fan, I don't like it.
I mean, people gotta be able to react and think for themselves a little bit.
I'm the one, no way.
Yeah, but the, the town clerk, like for registering your cat, the town clerk actually sends you
Oh, I know that, I, I use, it doesn't, I understand how that works, and, and I'm glad she does it, she sends you the paperwork ahead of time, you know what it's gonna cost you, and all that.
But would that replace that?
It could.
But what I'm saying, see, now, that would be cost effective, yeah, well, I'm just saying, that would be cost effective, because now she wouldn't have to be spending all that, that time, you know, typing all those things out, and mailing them, and all that.
Yeah, and there's still maybe requirements where, you know, something has to
But, yeah.
Not everybody in town has email, so
Yeah.
Yeah, they
Well, I, I just, I mean, just thinking it's got to that point, that's what people, that's what people think is important.
They get them for oil changes on their car.
I hear a generation, the younger generations like that.
It's not the younger generation.
It's not me, I don't like, I don't like those things.
I was gonna say, you're meeting with a bunch of people, you're meeting with the transition committee, they wanna know what they can do to get involved with people, yet they don't wanna come up and see the tax collector, pay the taxes in person, they don't wanna come see the town
Wait, you gotta point
They, they don't wanna see my town clerk, I wanna do it from home, from my computer, but what's the town gonna do for me? What's the town gonna do for me? We're gonna set up a committee so we can get together and do this stuff, but God forbid, I gotta go to the town office and pay my taxes, or, I wanna do it from home, from my computer. The town owes me that ability.
Yeah, it's not even the town, though, it's everything today, it's, you know, they go on eBay, or they go on
I know it's not you guys, I just have a big problem with the whole attitude.
And then you get, you'll get the one that's using the internet with that, and they get stuck, and they can't figure it out, they're gonna pick up the phone, now they're irate, and they're trying
They call, they're calling the town administrator.
Well, actually, they call the software
That's Allison, his first call's Allison.
No, they call the town administrator first, then, they don't call the, so they, I tried to pay my taxes online, and it wouldn't go through, what's wrong with the system? She will get the call, we're Allison. No, it, he can tell you that.
The younger generations are driving all this, and they wanna be able to do everything on their phone, they wanna be able to do on their tablets.
It's not all the
Quite a bit, there's, I mean, because I know through the state, they have many courses on managing the different generations, you know, the older generation, like we are here, and and it's like two more that follow, and be surprised at the differences that they are, or how they approach life in general.
When I have a question on my phone, I go ask the fire department, because I don't understand it.
I just, it all
They all wanna
It's not just the town, it's just even the banks now, you don't, you don't have to go to the bank to deposit your check.
I understand, I
I'm just saying, you know, it's not just the town. I don't, I, and I agree, I mean, I'm too old for this stuff.
Well, like I said, we wanna interact, give us a way to interact, that's a perfect interaction, plus you might meet somebody while you're here.
Oh, God for the
You know, you might meet
Talk to someone, come on, I can't send you a text.
Yeah, you're absolutely
I, it just, it just amazes me that we
It's come to this, I know.
Drive.
You get a text, you get a, a phone in your truck, when you go by, I'll send you a text. And then I'll wait.
Yeah, but after July first, you can't do that.
Yeah, yeah.
Dance free, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a bad idea.
It's all over now.
Yeah, we'll be touching wheels.
I'm just, that's all, that's not
Okay.
On that transitions committee, they suggested a commercial zone committee?
Well, oh, well, I guess let's back up the, the truck a little bit here, it's the, the community profile, that was the university, university system, and us, and the, you know, the transition group was steering committee, and get it going.
Well, I would suggest they go look at the file on the commercial zone committee that happened fifteen, twenty years ago.
I know, I was on it.
And I, you and I were on it, and we totally got trashed, and I mean, never
Well, I think, well, they're using that as a
We spent ten thousand dollars on it.
Yeah, they, what they want, they're looking at more as making an economic development committee, you know, that was, you know, that was like kind of morphing into something like that, you know, because that's what we're talking about, economic development, and I brought that up.
Oh, you did?
Yes, oh yeah, we went there, and it was always, nobody wanted it in my backyard, it was not my backyard.
That has to be
Yeah, that's exactly That's not changed.
Exactly, and that's how the, the whole discussion started to evolve, and they're like, well, we still like that business, it's, what about, you know, something that does, you know, like a green business that does internet
Big green.
Sales, or something like that, that would fit in the character of the town, small building, like Dunbar and Telephone, that could fit right in the farmhouse and work, and, you know, so that's what they're looking at, is
They could be looking at it, but wait till the town votes on it.
Right.
We'll put a
Who's giving that in America?
Well, it was at the time, but then again, that's if you were here last week, when I mentioned, you know, I said, we didn't have a good cross-section of people, in that, in that whole meeting.
No, but I, I didn't, you wanna back that up, the character of the town used to be farms, and sawmills, and stuff like that.